Welcome to our other content as well. Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
What?
No, no.
The little thing to go under here.
I'm not going to hit that beautiful mantelpiece behind me. All right, we'll let Laura get settled.
I'm assuming they're going to start recording.
I'm assuming it will start recording at some point. So, good evening. Welcome to the zoning board of adjustment. I'm saying this for the benefit, not just the extensive television audience. Welcome to the Exeter zoning board of adjustment meeting for Tuesday, November 18th, 2025. And let me start by introducing the board this evening to my far-left alternate member, John Dal Santo. Next to him, voting member Laura Montagno.
Vice Chair?
Yeah, Vice Chair. Laura Davies?
Yeah, sure.
Vice Chair, Laura Davies. To my immediate right would be then Clerk, Esther Olson Murphy, and Mr. Kevin Baum. We have six members, we have one application. Who would like to vote on this? We have five voting members. So, John, would you like to vote on this case?
Let the five normal people vote.
You're describing yourself then as Abby Normal?
Well, yeah.
Young Frankenstein definition there? Okay. So, the five permanent members will be the voting members this evening. So, let's begin. We have one piece of new business. The application of Amanda Kane and John Forbes for a variance from Article 4, Section 4.3, and Article 5, Section 5.1.2A for the expansion of a non-conforming use to permit the proposed construction of a 20-by-50 detached garage within the side and rear yard setbacks on the property of 17 Harvard Street. And a variance from Article 4, Section 4.3, scheduled two density and dimensional regulations for relief from the maximum building coverage requirement. Subject property is located in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, Tax Map Parcel 73-178, and this is ZVA Case 25-9. For the purposes of the discussion, I would say that we'll have one conversation about the two variances. We'll let you make one presentation to us. We'll ask our questions. We'll open it up to members of the public who are not here. And then, but we will vote separately on the two since they are two separate issues, the two separate variances. So, welcome. Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Which of you is going to be talking to us?
Well, I don't care.
Step up to the microphone, announce yourself. There's no microphone this evening.
No microphone. Well, I am Amanda Kane. I'm technically the owner at 17 Harvard Street, although John has resided there with me ever since I purchased the property in October of 2020. We find ourselves very fortunate to have found that property in 2020, but prior to kind of the property market going through all of the fun stuff that is going through now. But part of the outdoor property is just falling into a state of disrepair. We have a garage door that doesn't shut all the way. The side entryway is dissolving from various termites and other pest damage. So, we're looking to expand that. Knock down the existing structure, which appears to be in some sort of a state of disrepair despite the house being built in 1890. That seems slightly more solid than the garage actually appears. And then expand that. So, the current structure is 14 by 20 feet. We're looking to make it 20 by 50 feet. We have 50/50 custody of John's two boys. We have two dogs ourselves. I did not grow up in this area, but I have been in this area for a longer time now. And my parents are out of state. So, when they come up, 17 Harvard Street is a two-bedroom house. The boys obviously have one bedroom. We have the other, we have nowhere to put my parents when they come and visit, my niece and nephew when they come and visit. So, we're just sort of outgrowing the space, but we want that to be our forever home. So, that 20-by-50 structure would allow us space to kind of store all the lacrosse and hockey things that we have accumulated as both boys are players of those sports in the top Exeter. John is an avid hunter and waterfowl hunter. So, we do have a boat. Obviously, we're getting into that time of year where parking ban's coming to effect for a shared driveway. We're just sort of running out of room and looking for some space to store our vehicles and our books and all of the things. Anything to add there?
I don't think so. Okay, that's it? Okay. Questions from the board? I'll start, if you don't mind. It's a fairly large building that you propose. The mass is fairly large. So, 20 by 50 and a full two stories. I assume you've done the research and the two stories is allowed. The height is not an issue. The issue is both the setback and the size of the building. Why so large a building?
So, the bottom floor will be where we store all the cars and the things, the equipment. And then the upstairs would be the finished space where the boys can have some room to get away from each other. They're 11 and 7 at the moment. But I would imagine as they hit their teenage years, they're going to be slightly more reluctant to be sharing a bedroom. So, it will give them some sort of overflow space to hang out with their friends or, you know, have two separate rooms, which will then also give us room to house my parents or other guests or visitors who are of a population where our parents are aging and want to be able to kind of have a place where them should that need arise. So, sort of an independent structure for them as well.
Are you planning on having plumbing, heating, electrical, a kitchen, a bathroom? What's going to be in there upstairs?
Definitely plumbing and heating and electrical, probably a kitchenette of sorts. I wouldn't imagine that they would need a full kitchen in there, but I would say a bathroom and a shower.
So, you are considering this as an accessory dwelling unit? Yeah.
Yes, but not one.
Because that's not what you've applied for.
Okay. A finished room above a garage. I don't know what you, where the classification and the demarcations are. But it would need plumbing and electrical and heating.
What would set it apart, would make it an independent living unit, would be not a bathroom, which is standard thing to have, but a kitchen.
Okay.
But cooking, cooking facilities, I think would make it. So, you are considering it as an accessory dwelling?
Not if it's outside of the regulations, then no, it's not necessary.
I'm not sure that it is or it isn't. It's just not what you've put in here.
Okay.
I would do the research on the size. I know the rules are changing. Does anybody off the top of their head know what the rule is changing to?
I think if it's under 900 square feet, you don't need anything. But if it's over that, you do? That was a magic number.
Changing.
Which rule? You mean for accessory dwellings? I was just reading about this. There's a lot of rules around, like what you can mandate, who can live there, how many people can be in the room, like all of those things. I think the biggest one there is changing to the parking for accessory dwelling. You'd only need to have one additional parking space for an accessory dwelling.
So, you're, that's a nice segue, actually. Right now, your driveway is shared with your neighbor to the west?
Correct.
Okay. So, what do you guys, split the cost of plowing or whatever?
No, we shovel it.
You shovel it? Okay. Literally, you can park two cars behind the boat right now, right? You can fit two cars in?
Yeah, and I can fit a third car there as well.
To decide on ours.
I would look at whether an accessory dwelling unit is required, a special exception for that is required. What's going to happen? It used to be you had to come to the zoning board for them. I don't know when it becomes effective. That's one thing I don't know. But there was a new House, House Bill 577, says that accessory dwelling units are allowed by right in all residential areas. But there is a restriction on the size. So, you should be conscious of that. Because if you want to have it as a separate living unit, then you can do that. You just got to make sure you adhere to the bounds there. I had written down that there was a maximum was 950 square feet. And your goal is 1,000. So, you should look at that before you commit to anything. Are there any further questions for the applicant from the board? Since I've asked the only question so far.
Yeah, I have a question with respect to this drawing of this. This is the tax map. Is this the existing, is this the scale of the existing building?
Yep.
Okay.
I think, I mean, I didn't size it. I just pulled it off the website.
So, are there, is there any representation in the documentation that shows what that footprint is going to look like?
It's right in the packet.
I think if you look, it's on the aerial.
Oh, it's on the aerial? Yes.
Yeah, I made a drawing specifically for it that shows what it looks like now and what the expansion will look like on top of it.
There are two documents in there that show that.
I just looked at it online, so it's definitely there.
Yeah, that's the one.
Super clear. And then I think there was a enlarged tax map.
I don't think that's it. I guess I'm trying to get a sense for like this view or this view, how much farther down your fence line?
It shows, there's a map on there that I actually drew with the exact measurements of it, where it'll sit.
So, the existing building is 20 feet deep?
22 by 14.
Existence?
I can't see the time.
22 by 14.
This, what you're talking about, or is there a difference?
No, there's a second one.
There's an actual drawing with measurements. It plots out our.
Got that.
I mean, there's this, but that doesn't show it on top of it.
I can pull it up on the website, it was on the website.
It's funny, man.
The kind of thing I saw it online, but it's not in my spreadsheet packet.
Yeah, I didn't get that.
It's from online.
See, you don't have to vote, but you've got all the stuff.
I looked at it online, but I didn't credit.
That's right.
Oh, this is what you had, John. So, it's, it's all dimensions.
Are you at all concerned about being able to, given the amount of space that's now going to be between your garage and the house, being able to get potentially large equipment back there? Is there another access point?
The existing fence behind the existing garage is how they used to access with large.
It's a gated fence.
Over here?
Yep, right on the side. So, right here on the backside of our fence, it opens like this so that anything big could get in there if you had to.
Okay. But you'd have to go up to your.
But you'd have to go through someone else's property.
100%. We've never done that. It's, our fence is, I have it closed so that it doesn't open. I have dogs that I don't want getting out through my back of the fence. So, there's never been heavy machinery back then. But I have a lot.
How? Are you done?
Yes.
How committed are you to a metal building?
I think price-wise, it's a great option for us. You start to build that stick and you're looking at like three times the price at least. So, I looked at both sides of it. I actually have a friend that does construction. His idea was I would do it in metal. It's more, it's going to last forever. It's not going to fall apart. So, that's why, that's the reason. We're pretty, pretty into that.
It is sort of different than the character of the rest of the neighborhood.
I wouldn't say that.
Is it because of that commercial district that's right adjacent to us? So, we have that auto repair shop. This metal, there's wrecked cars that literally line the street and with shooters and some of the other auto repair shops that are also along the street. It sort of fits into the.
We have McCoys directly behind us. We have that whole area, we have the train tracks that run very through our back, our front yard, and then all of the businesses that are right there, which are all metal buildings.
No, no regard. Any further questions for the applicant, Laura?
I have, I have a few. Sorry, Laura.
No, I'm done, thank you.
Other Laura? Other Laura?
One more.
You mentioned on your application 18 feet to the eaves. Do you know what the height would be to the peak?
It's in the drawings.
Is it? I mean, see, I saw 18 feet to the eaves.
I can see. It only shows the eaves.
Oh, it does? All right. I don't know.
It doesn't look like a terribly steep roof, but okay.
It's not, it's definitely not a very steep roof because it's considered, it's still at the garage height. You don't want stuff falling off the sides.
I have some questions about what is existing out there because I didn't get a chance to drive by, so I'm just looking at them.
There's just a ton of pictures in there.
Yeah. Well, it's hard to tell though what's, so I'm just looking at the tax map. There's this, this sort of polygon structure here. You know what this is? It shows the.
The only thing we can think of is our deck.
Do you have an in-ground pool or something?
Above ground.
Above ground, I mean.
Above ground pool, but that.
I think that's.
From the street, it looks to me like a deck.
So, is it around the pool?
The whole backyard is, it's a deck. Then it's built up to the pool. And then the backyard with a fence around the entire.
I've seen that shape used for a pool before. It's weird, but.
And then, and it looks like there's an existing shed.
Yeah, there's an.
Back, is that going to be retained?
Probably not.
Yeah, no, we wouldn't need it with the space we would remove now.
Do you know what the existing, because one of the, I mean, you're asking for setback relief, but also coverage, and that would factor in. Do you know what your existing coverage is with that shed?
The worst. I actually think that, what did, I wrote it in the thing?
It says it's 22% coverage.
Because I actually came here and we did the measurement upstairs. I forget his name.
Yeah, we did.
I don't know which one it was upstairs and we actually did the test because I wanted to have the exact wording so that I could put it into that.
Yeah, let me work.
But we didn't remove the shed. We just went off what was existing and adding that.
So, if 25 is allowed, you're 22, and then it'd be a 9% increase.
But I don't know what the move.
That continues to include the shed. So, what we're saying is that it doesn't, yeah, that's not taken into consideration.
That wasn't taken into consideration.
Sure.
But it will be gone as well. So, I don't know what that removes it to. Closer to what it should be.
Yeah, that would help.
It's really only two bedrooms in that house, huh?
Yep.
Yeah, they converted the third bedroom into a very unnecessarily large bathroom.
It's huge.
34% coverage, 9% variation. Okay. Can I, do you have more questions?
No, I don't think so.
I have some.
Esther, please.
So, it looks like the garage is right on the property line on that one side? The garage is existing.
And they're, I think that's the property line, I would imagine. We're not looking to go any further. Where our fence is, the building goes straight back.
So, you're going to take out the fence that's there now?
And the fence will still be there wherever it ends. We're not going to remove that part of the fence because I still want my yard to be fenced in.
But it's going to be, the last 20 feet is going to be fenced?
Yeah, so it'll still be.
It'll feed into the back.
It'll feed into the back fence and then go around still.
It'll be fenced all over there.
Yeah, but this is all going to be side of the building for the neighborhood.
The house to your immediate left, the one with whom we share a driveway, is that a single family?
It's a multifamily.
And I believe they're both renters.
And the building immediately behind you on Winter Street is also multifamily.
Correct.
All the families, both sides.
So, you're surrounded.
All of our, all the houses that surround us on my garden.
Across the street are single families, but on your block, they're all.
Correct.
Okay.
And the sidewall A in this line, does that face your property?
That'll face our property, correct.
You got another?
I think I'm good for now.
Okay. Anybody else survey the membership here? Everybody good for now? Okay. So, what we're going to do is a formality, which is, thank you. We're going to open this up to the public and close public discussion. And since there's no public commentary, there's nothing for you to rebut. Okay. So, we will then therefore immediately go into deliberations.
I actually have one more question.
Please do.
To confirm, because on the sketch plan, on the graph paper, it looks like you're coming.
Six feet up.
Six feet out.
Correct.
Okay. But on the, on the, on the aerial, you have it shown.
Right, that's why, that's why I did that drawing so that you could actually see what it covers.
That aerial is not the scale.
So, it'd be six feet closer to the street than the existing garage?
Correct. And I think the measurements are on there. It's like 55 feet back is where it will start instead of 50.
It was like 61.
You know what I mean? Like, I don't remember.
61.
61.
Yeah, thank you. It was never my forte.
All right.
And what's the? Okay. And it'll go back to 20. What's, I ran out of my office without covering my, I'm very unprepared today without covering my organs. What's the rear setback? We're not.
25.
25.
25, I think.
So, they need variance for the rear.
And the side.
And the side. I think, I don't know where the property line is on that side, to be completely honest.
Well, you're supposed to be 15 feet, so pretty sure you're probably within 15 feet of the.
So, it says, your setback. The application specifically states 15-foot setback and 5-foot variance from the rear property line.
Right.
As the new building would be 20 feet from the rear line. We're supposed to be 20. Okay. So, the first discussion is concerning, where's my application? It's concerning the variance for side and rear yard setbacks. And then the same discussion, but a separate vote will be for the coverage. So, side and rear yard setbacks. This is a variance, so we are going to have to go through the variance criteria at some point. I will ask someone to do that. Anyone want to start?
Well.
This is when the group gets really quiet.
I mean, just for the purposes of discussion. I mean, I do think this is a little tough in that it is just because of the increase in size is so much and it's right on the line. I think my biggest concern with it, and I will say there's some benefits here. You know, there's some uniqueness of this property that makes sense. One, there is an existing garage that's right on the line. It's been right on the line. The existing, all of the surrounding lots are not conforming. I mean, that just, that's the type of neighborhood it is. The immediate and most affected of butter, that building is pushed all the way other to the, to the far side and the front. So, I'm the, that lessens the concerns that I do have. And the biggest concern, I think, is, is the size of this building and the bulk of this building because it's going up so much. I think this would be a much easier call if it was going to stay the, a single story. That said, you know, one of the concerns with, with encroaching on the setback is loss of shading, loss of privacy, things like that. And that is definitely lessened here because it could be further development of the neighboring property. But really, that, that, that building is to the front left of the lot and positioned such that it's going to be less affected than, you know, than it otherwise might be if it was conforming.
If the building was centered on that lot, for example.
So, that's just, I don't, I don't have any, you know, that, those are just my general thoughts and concerns. So, I am not really sure where I stand on this.
I share your concern over the mass of the building. I think it's, it's a, it's a big chunk of building. But it is removed from the street. And it is removed as much as you can be, I mentioned, from behind the building that faces Winter Street. There's some shade, there's some foliage back there as well, some screening.
We have like tree, I'm sorry.
Sorry, it's.
My bad.
Yep.
Zip it, I get it.
Thank you. Unless we invite. It is, there is some screening back there. And I don't know that this is a real problem. They're not requesting a height variance. It is allowed in that area. So, they could do in the existing. It is allowed in that area, so they could do in the existing footprint, it would be an awkward-looking building, but they could rebuild it to be a system footprint to two stories and put a very small building, what is it, fourteen by twenty-two now, so they could put a two-hundred and.
I actually, I think they actually would need relief to go up in the setback. That said, we generally wouldn't have any issues with that.
Right, 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 right. They would need relief to go up, yeah, because it would be an expansion on our values, right.
But, I, point taken.
But this is a significant, fourteen by twenty-two is less than three hundred square feet and we're going to a thousand, so it's a.
More than three times the size.
Yeah, it's over-tripling the, the encroachment into, into the setback.
I think one of the questions I have as well is this, whether the applicant does it now. Future purchasers getting this and then wanting to convert this into an accessory dwelling. Now we have an accessory dwelling which is larger than the regulations allow, right? But we have to allow for it because it's already there. And what, I mean, it seems like when we did have to review accessory dwellings as special exceptions, the one thing that we, the primary thing that we looked at was parking and making sure that there is enough parking. And I think that that needs to be considered as well, is that, or can it be considered thinking about future buyers and what they may potentially do and how that would impact the zoning requirements?
We are allowed to require one parking spot per bedroom. No more than that, so we can't, we used to have to round off for one for visitors. Multifamily, we can't do that anymore. It's just one per bedroom. So it's a two-bedroom house, there would be a one-bedroom, I'm assuming it would be one-bedroom in the, we shouldn't have asked you, sorry.
But you could easily, but somebody else could easily make it two-bedroom.
Somebody could easily make it two-bedroom.
Could easily make it two-bedrooms, and there, there probably is not room for four.
Correct. And I guess that's, you know, kind of my, one of my concerns is.
It is a concern, it is a concern, and I wish we had more definite information on the size. I believe that it used to be seven-hundred-and-twenty square feet was the maximum. I believe it's gone to nine-fifty.
I mean, and I will say, they're not asking, I mean, we, I know, they're not, they're not asking. And so, just to be clear, tonight, we would be granting relief only to what was requested. And that would not give them, you know, permission to have a accessory dwelling unit. Assuming that they meet the, the criteria as it's been amended by statute, they could do it. If it's, the building's too big, they wouldn't be able to without relief. Or, I mean, what I see a lot of people doing and probably would happen here is you, you frame out some area of storage and then it's not.
Living.
It's not living space.
Not living space.
So, it's kind of.
It's an internal cluj, as it were.
And parking would be an issue as well, potentially.
So the interior of the building could count for parking, I believe, is that not the case?
A parking spot in a garage is a parking spot.
Yeah.
There could be three or four parking cars in that garage.
I mean, that's their intent, but the problem is that, you know, it's a very, very big building for its location, and it could house a lot of cars, and it, it's concerning for future use that it's going to be something besides, you know, just extra space for a family. The type of building, the size of the building, the whole thing, so. It does trouble me that it's the type of building that could easily be used in a different way, and it's a lot for the neighborhood and the, and the parcel.
And there are industrial buildings around, but on Harvard Street itself is.
Residential. Also a family, but it's residential.
It's all residential, they're.
Across Rockingham, there are.
Yeah, down by the tracks, there are some, but actually where he's from that location, they're all homes.
Which is typical, I mean, a lot of older communities have industrial next to the railroad tracks. It has sometimes been converted to apartments or other uses, and it's just kind of traditional the way it's been, but this is a neighborhood. You know, residential neighborhood, it's mixed use nearby, but this is a few blocks is.
Did I, I have a question about the grandfathering. Can you grandfather in when you're putting in a new building that is larger than the original? I guess if they had the original footprint and they're moving it back or something, that'd be fine, but you're now on the lot, three times longer than you are now, is that really something you can grandfather in?
No, we'd be granting relief for that, that's what they're asking for.
Wasn't a grandfathering wording in the application at all?
Well, there is some building on the lot line now, so.
Yeah, but they're not asking, I mean, I, I don't see this as any grandfather.
Okay.
I mean, it, it, it would have to be in the same footprint.
That's what I thought.
Okay, would somebody like to go through the areas criteria, or should I do that?
Oh, boy.
Listen, you got us all talking about it, so do it.
Okay. Criteria one, the variance is not contrary to the public interest and its co-conspirator, the spirit of the ordinance is observed. So the proposed use must not conflict with the explicit or implicit purposes of the ordinance and must not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, threaten public safety, welfare, or otherwise injure public rights. I guess the only part of this that I would get hung up on based on our discussion is alter the essential character of the neighborhood. We could have some discussion around that. It is, there are other detached supplemental buildings, garages, sheds, whatever they happen to be in the area, but I'm not aware of any separate residences in the neighborhood. So is this changing the essential character of the neighborhood to have a building, whether it's used by their sons or by other family members, whether it's officially an accessory dwelling unit or not, there will be people living in that building some of the time. It is equipped for that with a bedroom, toilet facilities, and a, a small kitchenette. Does anybody else feel that there might be some way in which this alters the essential character of the neighborhood, or you think we're okay there?
Well, I think to your point, I actually think we're, I think we're okay. I mean, I don't think the use, it's residential use, I don't think the fact that, that we, it will likely be an accessory dwelling unit really changes the characteristics because we have a lot of residential use right up against property boundaries. If they did a, you know, if they, they redid the existing garage to put in a detached accessory dwelling unit in there, they wouldn't need to come in at all, so I don't think that changes the character. I think the fact that it's a large, you know, sort of bulky metal building is, I think, is, that to me gets more to the character of the neighborhood, but we also don't really have purview over. You know, I'd feel a lot better if it was more in line with the existing architecture, but that isn't really our purview either. So I'm hesitant to say that, but to, to say that they have to put in a specific architectural style.
Type of building.
Given we're not in the historic district, we're not, you know, we don't have architectural criteria as part of our consideration.
Okay. Hearing nothing else, I believe that it passes on one and two. Three, substantial justice is done. Benefits of the application, to the applicant, the applicant should not be outweighed by harm to the general public or to other individuals. I really don't see that there's any harm being done by putting this building in this location on the property, so.
Agreed.
Agreed, yeah, okay, so we're okay on three. Four, the values surrounding properties are not diminished. We have had, as we've always heard before, no testimony one way or the other as far as values are concerned. I honestly think that keeping a single-family home in this area is a good thing for the neighborhood, so if anything, there would be a net positive, but certainly it would be a wash on as far as values are concerned. I'm seeing nods going around the room. And the toughest one is this one, literal enforcement of the ordinance, which would mean that you cannot expand to the use within that, beyond the footprint of the existing building, would result in unnecessary hardship because of special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. So, this is always a bit of a tricky one, is there hardship here? There's obviously a benefit to the applicant in having this building expanded in terms of their life and their family and their ability to stay in a single-family home in the neighborhood, which obviously the town would very much like. But is there a hardship that exists that?
To the property, not to the owner.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't know.
Well, I mean, my, so I think there are special conditions here, that's the first question, because this is a small, I think, given the size of the lot, given the real limitation on building, you couldn't, you can't put a detached garage building on this lot really without violating the setbacks.
You're gonna hit one side or the other, it's gonna be a very, very technical.
Right, and given the, the location of the existing building, you're really stuck in the setbacks, certainly the side setbacks. So, you know, I think given the, you know, given the, the area, given the lot, I think there's special conditions, which is the first step. And then the next question is whether the, you know, the, the, the general purposes of the ordinance are applicable to the, you know, specific situation.
To propose use as a original.
Yeah, and so, you know, that gets back to me to, okay, what's the purpose of these setbacks? You wanna, you wanna not infringe on the neighbors, you don't wanna shade them out, you don't want reduced privacy, and as I think, I, I'm, you know, I think that's, to the rear, it's pretty wooded and I do think it abuts the commercial area. I think that's for less, less of a concern. It already exists right on the property line, but not to that height or that extent. And, and again, I think it is offset largely by, I mean, I, I am very helped by the fact that, that, you know, nineteen Harvard Street, which is really the effective property, is so far skewed away from the proposed development. So I think that, in that end, that, you know, it, it does, you know, it, it does sort of obviate the need for the general purposes of the setback. It's, you know, the protecting against those, those impingements on the, on the neighboring lot.
Any further discussion? I'll accept a motion. I shouldn't.
I guess, yeah, I guess since I'm talking a lot, I will, I will move.
Continue with that.
I, I will move to approve the request for expansion, well, I don't even know that it's, so, to, for the expansion of the not conforming use to permit the proposed construction of a twenty-by-fifty detached garage within the side and rear setbacks.
Done?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Second by Laura, any discussion of the motion?
I do, I just have a lot of trouble with the size of this building.
I know a little more.
That it's in, on the property line, and it, yeah, I do. And, and the, the style of building as well is, is not, to me, it's not in character with the neighborhood. So I know, you know, I understand their need for more space, I think if, you know, I sympathize with that, I just think this is a very big building. And, so I am struggling with that.
So we need to discuss the motion specifically, which is to approve the application as presented to us with regard to the setbacks.
Right, so. Size, I guess the, the reason I bring up size in regard to this motion is that there's an existing building on the, on the lot line, but this is a much, much bigger building on the lot line, and so.
And taller.
And taller, yeah. So, that's, that's a much bigger ask for the setback relief.
Would you propose a different, would you like to amend Kevin's, propose an amendment to Kevin's motion?
I don't know how to change it.
Okay.
So, I mean, I think we can vote, I'm just expressing my thoughts in the discussion part of this. And, you know.
I mean, we can ask the applicant, I mean, we can ask the applicant questions, including about this design. I said this is a prefab structure.
Yeah, I.
The type of building is, they can put whatever building they want. What this board is charged with is not what the building looks like. It is the size of the building and the amount to which it encroaches into the setbacks. They could put up a prefab metal building, they could put up a wooden building, they could put cedar shingles, they could put, you know, board and bat and siding on it, and that's not the purview of this board. Purview of this board is strictly the dimensional, the dimensions as presented in the application. It is a courtesy for them to have shown us that it's a metal building. It is not a requirement, it is not, they are not mandated to put up a metal building. Clearly, they're going to, because that makes economic sense, that's fine. But that should not really factor into our discussion. What's, what's a factor is the mass of the building and its location.
And by mass, you mean footprint, not height, because they're within.
I mean both, because they are putting up a two-story building where a one-story building exists.
Okay.
So when I say mass, I literally mean mass.
Okay.
Not, you know, it is, it's a very, I mean, the use seems quite reasonable until you actually look, and again, disregarding the material that's chosen, until you look at this picture. And, or that set of pictures, you know, it's a big building, that's a big building. It looks like an industrial building dropped in the middle of a residential neighborhood. It has a, a large garage door, the end wall is twenty feet wide. What's twenty feet wider than this building? About the width of this room, is that about twenty feet speed, my guess? Something like that. The width of this building and fifty feet long and a block, it's a brick, it's two stories. There's no cutouts, there's no balustrades, there's nothing architectural about the outside. I don't know where I got the word balustrade, never mind. Those are the things, those are the things on stairs. I don't know where the hell I came up with that, and I don't know what I was looking for, but it wasn't balustrade.
That's okay.
Or instrumentation or something.
Yeah, instrumentation, which a lot of the buildings.
Which is a style thing.
Which is, which other buildings in this area have. But again, that's not what we're here, we're talking about, the size and the degree to which it encroaches.
Well, and forgive me, but, you know, as a real estate appraiser, commercial appraiser, the adaptable, once this building's here, it's here, and it will become adaptable to uses that are not necessarily typical for a single-family neighborhood. You know, auto repair or something like that. It, it will have the capacity to be used in a variety of ways. And so we are making the decision whether or not this is the right thing for this property in this neighborhood under zoning. And I, I am not, I, I don't care about the style, I don't, you know, I, I, I like the idea that they can save money and people are going for, you know, sort of this industrial, modern look and, you know, all that. It's just the adaptability of this building to different uses in the future that, you know, once it's there, we won't, no one will have anything to say about it, pretty much. And I, I am concerned a little bit about that. Not because I'm being snobby about architecture or anything, I just see that as a potential situation in the, in the neighborhood in the future.
And I, likewise, I mean, that's kind of why I articulated that earlier. I have a similar concern about not this applicant and what their plans are, but what the potential. similar concern about not this applicant and what their plans are, but what the potential impact is for the future and what that building could.
Putting a building with a footprint of 1,000 square feet, with 2,000 square feet of space inside it, into this space is not clear-cut.
Yeah, it's, you're putting in more space than the house itself is.
Well, that's a question I do have, do we have a square footage of the?
We do, the house is 1,936.
Isn't that big?
Square foot.
I thought it was like 13. I looked it up earlier.
It's on the first page of the application for variance. We're also requesting variance on the percentage of the property cover as we currently have a 1,930 square foot building covered. Actually, 1,936 includes the existing building. So it's not, the house is a different size, it's not 1,936.
The house is 13 something? I think quick math, it might be a little larger than it. Could it be 13? I wrote it down, so I have everything.
We could ask the applicant, they might know that number. Not living area, but simply square footage on the ground, is that what you're looking for?
I had living, I, I looked up living area.
Living area.
Was 13 something.
Well, yeah, and I think that's the question, is, is because it does almost double the size, you know, it's a structure, but that is, I mean, it, it footprint, it looks like it's almost as big as the existing house. It's about the size of the existing house minus, is the addition to the right.
The house is like 34 by 36, roughly.
Mm-hmm.
Like, or, living space is 1,464 square feet, based on the successor's data.
Okay.
I think that's where my, my question about the grand fathering, the sideline too, is like, I don't mind they're on the sideline, but going from 20 feet to 50 feet on the line, two stories. It's rented now, so much of the owner got notice, not necessarily the neighbors, because they don't own it.
Correct.
It's fine, but they're still gonna be the ones impacted by it. There are windows on that side of the building. It's a big boy.
Yeah. And the applicant, uh, applicants did say in their cover letter, the house is in our Point neighborhood. This is not a Point building that you proposed. Okay. No, I think we need to vote on the motion that's before us, because we do have an open motion that happened second. So, all those in favor of the motion to approve the application, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Well, somebody's gotta vote on something.
I'll vote, I, I made a motion, I'll vote aye.
Okay, so Kevin is an aye.
For which one? I'm confused now.
For the, to, for my motion.
His motion to approve.
Prove your motion, okay, thank you.
So we have one aye. Opposed?
Me.
I don't oppose this.
I don't oppose this.
Chair is opposed as well. So, motion fails, four to one. You understand what just happened?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, and you've heard the discussion about this. And so you have an understanding of what our reservations were and there are ways that you could address that. We're not saying move, sell the house, get out of Exeter. We're saying is that the scale of the building is out of character with the, with the area and the request is too significant. Okay? Um, and would you like us to move forward with the second variance?
I mean, we're here, might as well.
Okay.
Well, does it?
It won't.
Make sense to, I mean, it kind of.
Because it's based on the size of the building.
Yeah, I don't know.
That's correct, right. So we've rejected the building, so we really can't hear the second variance. So then, no.
To this proposed.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I mean, I hope you hear, you know, I think it's, the, the concern is really about the sort of fall, or the size of it. And other than that, I think generally, you know, it was generally positive, but it is a big building to add to this lot, right on the sideline.
We're actually providing a little more information, because technically, we've taken a vote, the answer is no, this application is closed. But we want to offer the additional commentary that there are ways in which you can address this. We're trying to soften the blow.
Got it.
Right. We're trying to soften the blow.
Yeah, and, and I want to make, I mean, just to be clear about it, that, because there is some, you know, there is a law that, that limits how many times you can come back, but I think I would, you know, I would explicitly invite a new application that takes our comments into consideration. So.
There you have it. Thank you. Thank you very much for coming.
Thanks. I think that's it, I don't have minutes.
We have no minutes to it.
I don't know, it says minutes, but.
Approval of minutes, which we do not have. Okay. Let's skip that part. Motion to adjourn?
Uh, motion, second?
Second.
All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Um, I was wondering whether that was gonna happen.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 8, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune in to our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.